Bless you my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus our risen Savior and Savior. We thank God, praise God for another day, another month. This, can you believe it? This seven months in this year 2023 and sending another day that He'll bless us, a smile on us. And always if you got in a good sense, you're stopping your track and tell the Lord, "Thank you." Sending to all of our new hope audience and to all of our friends and family that shares with us each, each day during this week and sending their, sending their acts that just take a moment to just call a church member, a family member, a friend, text them, inbox them. Let them know that this is the New Hope Number One Baptist Church Ministry is on, that it will do them good not only today, but in the days to come. Sending and praying that you have had a blessed Independence Day, Fourth of July, as we celebrate the freedom of these United States of America. And sending there was a time for family and friends and sending their reflection upon our country, our freedom. Prayers and thoughts goes out to all Berea families and those who are sick and sitting in hospitals, at home, nursing home, those who've gone through surgery procedures and who are recovering. Sending that we want you to know that we are praying for you, that the Lord will continue to touch and strengthen and heal, raise you back up off your sick bed and return back and do the duties that you once had been done. Let us pray, God our Father, we come today just as we are. We come leaning and depending, trusting in your holy and righteous way. Thank you dear God for this privilege in this moment to talk to you. And God, as we come just as we are, as empty pitches before full fountains and action, that I will look on us with our pity, our compassion, our mercy, God, as there ever was a time that we need you to have mercy upon us, do it right now. Look on us collectively, look on us individually. And God, as you look on us, forgive us of all of our sins. God, we acknowledge that they are ever before us. Oh God, we confess our sins now. God, we, we confess, we know that you is a God who are faithful to your word. And God, continue to wash us in your word, continue dear God, to saturate our minds and our heart. Give us a hunger and thirst for righteousness. Bless us now, God, be praying for mankind, even with God, be praying for our church family, praying for the body of Christ. God, continue to bless, continue to lead, continue to hold us in your unchanging hand. God, I'm praying now, God, that I would just, just look on us now and just, God, continue to mold us, continue to shape us in what you will have us to be. God, I'm praying for those who ask us to pray for them. You know them name by name, touch them, God, by condition. And God, just move by your power and by your spirit. Bless us now, God, we'll bless you back. That we'll tell the world what a great God you are. Now, we ask you coming now in a person to hold the spirit, touch our spiritually ears that we can hear, our eyes that we can see, our hearts that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now, you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be accepted and not say, "Oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer." And all of those that love the Lord said, "Amen." All right, let's get right into our study and discussion on today as we still dealing with the importance of commitment. And as we've been dealing with being committed to the word is that, is that we believe the word. And since we believe the word is that we have to believe in Jesus. You can't believe in Jesus and omit the word. All right, let's say that again. You cannot believe in Jesus and omit the word. You got to read. We got, we got to read the word. We got to, we got to read the word. We got to study. We got to, we got to remember that. We got to read the word of God. We just can't, just can't, we just can't hear. We got to read it. And whenever we try to believe in Jesus without believing in the Bible is that, that ain't gonna work. We're not getting anywhere. We would never be successful if we don't commit ourselves to the word of God. Okay? Is that you will remain weak. It just ain't gonna work. It's just trying to mix oil and water together. You're not, you're not, it's not gonna work. It's not, you're not, it's not going to mix. And so, so when you're trying, when you're trying to get to know Jesus, to know the Lord, to hold the spirit, dealing with the Trinity, is that the best method is the word of God. Believe in Jesus, believe in this word. The more we believe the word, the more we're going to believe in Jesus. Okay? Let me say that again. The more we believe the word, the more we are going to believe in Jesus. We have, we have not seen Jesus, but, but we, we've heard the word. And because we, we have the written word, is that we can read the word. And the more that we read and the more that we hear the word of God, the more that we experience in believing the word. That's, that's what Jesus had John, his cousin, to write in First John, Chapter one. In the beginning was the word. And the word was, was God, and the word was with God. And so, since we have not seen the word, seen Jesus in the flesh, but we have to believe. Huh? Yeah, we got to believe. We, 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 this present day, we present day believers, say it again. We have not seen the word. John said in First John, "The word became flesh and enveloped among us." We did not, we did not, we have not seen the word in the flesh. But in order for us to be born again, we must, what? We must read, we must believe the word. We cannot be authentic, we cannot be witnesses. We cannot do the mandate that he instructed his disciples at that time. And since we are present, his present day disciples, is that he says, Luke says in Acts, Chapter one, Jesus said to the disciple, "You shall be my witnesses." Knowing the way that, when you think about our own personal experience in life with Christ Jesus, no one can be saved unless, unless there's a witness. And so, and so, so if others is going to be saved, come to Jesus Christ, is that it's gonna take a witness. And you can't testify about Jesus and who Jesus is if you don't have the word. The word of God has to be rooted in our hearts. Huh? The word of God got to be rooted. Write that down. The word of God has to be rooted, has to be granted, planted in our hearts. Oh yeah, yeah. And when it's, when it's rooted, is that it produces fruits. Yeah, it produces, it's gonna produce something. And so, wherever the word is, Jesus is there. That's what, that's what, that's what John said. When you look in that fifth chapter of John, look at it when you get a chance. Read it, read it, look, look at it. John, Chapter five, verse thirty-eight. Oh, you're there. John, Chapter five, verse thirty-eight. Listen at what it says, "And ye have not his word abided in you for whom he has sent; him ye believe not." Look at, look at what, look at what, look at what Jesus is saying through the words of John. He says, he says, "And come to see what I'm trying to tell you." When he was talking to his audience, is that, is that he was telling, telling the disciples, is that you got, you got to abide in the word. And you go back up to verse number thirty-seven of that fifth chapter. "And the Father himself who hath sent me has borne witness of me. You have neither heard his voice at any time, nor seen his shape. And no one who is under the sound of my voice, who, who listening, who watching, who is, who is here, is that, is that no, none of us have heard the voice of Jesus at any time when he was in the flesh." Jesus was saying this to John. He said, "We have not seen his shape. We will see him according to scriptures when he comes in his glory." To judge the church in the world. Since we did not see him in the flesh when he, over two thousand years ago, but we ought to, yeah, we shall see him. And the reason we're gonna believe that is because of the word. How we, how we know we're gonna see him? He said it, his, his word is, he, he said it. And because we have his word, is that we're gonna believe it. And all of this ties in, when you go back to verse number thirty-eight. If the word is not in you, you're not gonna believe in Jesus. So what are you saying Pastor? Is that, is that, is that how much you and I believe in Jesus depends upon how much word is in us? That's good teaching right there. Let me say that again. How much you and I believe in Jesus depends on how much of the word? How much of his word is in us? Because when you, when you think about it, the reality of it is, is that our faith is determined by the amount of word that you and I have in us. And then it moves us to a point of how committed we are to the word. She's dealing with the importance of being committed to the word. We got to get the word in us, we got to read the word. And the more of the word that is in us, will determine how much faith. And y'all, y'all know what the writer of Hebrews says in that eleventh chapter of Hebrews, verse number six, is that if we want to please God, it, it ought to be each believer's ultimate desire, ultimate goal is to please God. And the writer says, is that without faith, in that sixth verse of that eleventh chapter of Hebrews, is that without faith, it is impossible to please God. And I like how the New International Verge's apostle, he said, "Because anyone who comes to him must believe," goes to that word, "believe," that he exists and that he rewards those who diligently, the King James said diligently, the NIV said earnestly seeks him. So you ask the pastor, "How do, how do I attain, how do I acquire faith?" I'm glad you said it. The word of God tells us how we get there. And in Romans, Chapter ten, verse seventeen, Paul says to the, to the believers in Rome, "So then faith coming by hearing." Read it, read it when you get a chance. That tenth chapter of Romans, verse seventeen. Faith coming by hearing and hearing by what? The word of God. You and I have to get to a point on our Christian journey that if we're gonna have faith in God, is that we got to take our time for the word. We got to believe in God's word. It's just like a farmer who plants a seed. The farmer has to go out and before he plant the seed, there got to be some work. He has to prepare the field for planting. Just can't go out there and just throw the seeds out, just wasting time and money. But the farmer has to go out and prepare the way that the seed might be planted. And once he prepares the ground for planting, is that the farmer has to have his faith that the seed will bring forth a what? Fruitful harvest. The farmer know that he cannot make it rain. And I know this new technology of doing things now with the, with the water sprinkles and system like that, but it still takes God to send the rain. The farmer got sister enough to know that he cannot do anything to make that seed do anything else. Only thing that the farmer knows is that he got to get the ground prepared and that he got to plant the seed. But the farmer knows that when it come down to the watering, come down to the rain, when it come down to the harvest, is that it's out of his hand. But that farmer has to have faith that that seed is going to do what Pastor? That it's gonna take a root. Are you listening to me? Now, what are you saying Pastor? I'm glad you asked. Now, that, 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 if the farmer can have that much faith in that old dried up seed, that if, that if he plant it, that it's gonna turn in something fruitful. So it is ought to be when it come down to the word of God, is that we ought to have enough faith in God's word that if we allow the word to be planted in our hearts, things will happen. And I want to go a little bit farther, is that, is that, is that, just like the farmer, is that we ought to be anticipating a larger and a greater harvest. In other words, you ought to want to share the word with someone else. You ought, you ought to be committed as, as, as a believer of least sharing the word of God, least planting the word of God in somebody else's life. And I want to challenge us, if we just take that word of God that we believe and plant it in the hearts of others, things would happen. It's good teaching that. I don't care who it is, I don't care. If you plant that word, no matter what that person present condition may be, they may be mean, maybe low down, no good in them. Maybe the worst of the worst. But if you commit yourself of, of getting that word of God in you and share that word, don't care how bad that person's reputation may be. If you just be committed of, of sharing that word, planting that seed. That's what, that's what, that's what that, when you study the Bible, read the Bible, when it talk about the seed. Jesus used the proverb about the word, talking about the seed was planted on thorny ground, rocky ground, then on good ground. A good farmer knows how to, to remove those thorns, those thistles and those rocks. There's some work there. But once the work has been done, then you can still plant some seed. You can still plant the word. So we have to commit ourselves of studying the word. Once we get the word in our hearts, and then it becomes our obligation as believers, is to witness, to share that word with others. And that's all God requires of us. That's all the Lord requires of us, is to plant the seed. That's all you have to do. Is just plant the seed. Do like a real, do like a real farmer does, is that you plant that seed, plant it in prayer. That's good teaching right there. Plant it in, plant, plant it in prayer. Plant it in faith. What you're doing is that you exercising faith in God, that God is going to do what? He's gonna raise up something that gonna bring about a change in that person's heart. God would do that. So, so, so the point that I'm driving at right there is that we must, we must believe the word. And not only we must believe the word, but we must believe about the word. Write that down. Not only we gotta believe the word, we just can't believe in the word, but we gotta believe about the word. Cause the truth of the matter is, is that a person can have the knowledge of the word without being committed to the word. What are you saying Pastor? Let me say it again. Is that a person can have full knowledge of the word without being committed to the word. And many in the body of, of Christ have the knowledge of the word. It's, it lives in their heart, but they don't obey the word. You just can't have the knowledge of the word, but you got to be obedient to the word. It's right here in this fifth chapter of St. John. Look at, look at what, look what he says, starting at verse twenty-four. "Verde verde I send unto you: he that adhered my word and believed on him that sent me hath everlasting life, and shall not come into judgment, but is passed from death unto life." This is what Jesus is saying. Listen at what he said. In order for you and I to have everlasting life, we first of all, got to hear the word. Then secondly, we got to believe in the word. And then thirdly, we got to according to scriptures, that we got to commit our life to the word. And when we commit our life to the word, we commit our life to who? Jesus. I'm glad you asked. Why? Because I keep, I keep been teaching is that Jesus and the word are the same. Cause out of all of this, is that in order for us to please God and to keep, be reminded, is that the only way we can please God is by faith. When we have the word in us, is that we have what Jesus defined as mustard seed faith. Mustard seed starts out as a small tiny seed, but it continues to grow. We have to have mustard seed faith, a growing faith. A faith that grows in love. We grow in understanding, we grow in love. We grow in wisdom. And the challenge here in verse number twenty-four, that if we believe the word that Jesus is, 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 is saying here in verses twenty, twenty-four, is that, is that the word of God ought to challenge us to believe. And one of the greatest challenge that we as believers, that we as Christians find ourselves in is obeying the word. We can be, we can be committed to get the knowledge and to read the word, but if we are not committed to obeying the word, is that we're not fulfilling the requirement and what God is requiring for us to do and to be. There's good teaching right here. He don't want that kind of commitment from us that we choose when we read the word of God and when we study the word of God, when we know more about Jesus, become more aware of Jesus, is that, is that, is that he don't want us to operate on our own. We choose what we have read and what we know and what we feel that is more comfortable to us. That's what, that, that, you know, that's what we want to obey. But anything else that we don't see, we have not grown to that maturity yet of obeying it, is that we find ourselves want to be free agents. When you find yourself don't want to be under the authority and the lordship of Jesus Christ. When we said, when we said that he's the Lord of our lives. When we said, when we said that he's the lord of, of our life. Many quick to get up and say, first give an honor to God who is the head of my life. If he's the lord of your life, if he's the head of your life. Is that you're not your own. You're under submission. Of the lordship and the, the kingship. Of Jesus Christ. You can't have the word of God and rebel against God. Are you listening to me? And the average statistic says that the average Christian. Have knowledge of the word, but they don't. Obey. They're not committed to the word. It's just like a child who rebels against his parents. When, when, when a parent or parents, um, asks that child to, um, do some short, um. Chores around the house like washing the dishes and, um, cleaning up the house, cleaning up the bathroom. Taking out the trash and, and that child. Become reluctant of doing it. And, um. Don't want to do it. Kinda, uh. Has a little hissy, hissy fit and, and, um. Give some kind of notion that they don't want to do it. Other words, they, they fool's around and, and they really don't want to, want to do it. They really want to be disobedient. If that child is rebelling. But if that child. Has true love and true respect and true obedience, uh, to his or her parents. Is that, uh, the, 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 the parents does not have to continue to, uh. Remind that child of what, uh, they asked them to do. That child is going to obey. Ain't gonna be sassy, ain't gonna talk back. And when I, when I was coming up, it wasn't nothing, you better not give. Uh, those older peoples any, um, uh, uh, notion, any kind of feeling that you didn't want to do. Uh, what they said do because, uh, you next time you gonna find yourself eating, get up off the floor. Or, or you, you finna, you talking about a beat down, you finna get a whooping. Uh, you talking about, uh, give them any kind of, uh, 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 feeling that you didn't want to do what they asked you to do. It wasn't, there wasn't no such thing you talk about, talking back. Uh, grandmama, grandmama could be in the kitchen. And, uh, I could be back in the back room or in the living room or wherever. And she hollers, come bring me a glass of water. Well, I couldn't say, it might've, might've been in my mind, you right there in the kitchen. But out of obedience and out of respect is that I had to get up and go do what? She said. And when we was coming, whenever those older people tell us to do something, is that it made them happy. And that's the same way God is about us. When we obey God. It makes God happy, just like, just like our children, uh, and our grandchildren makes us happy. When they do what's right. Tell my children that you, you, you're not just representing yourself, but you, you representing the Kimbrows. The Jackson, all that, is that to use a representation, not just of yourself. But others. Make your family proud of you. And this should be the same case when it come down as us, as Christian. When it come to us knowing the word of God. When we come to know the word, is that we learn how to serve God better. To do better in his name. That, that what makes God's happy. When we obey his word. Are y'all still with me? So I want, I want to, I'm gonna wrap it up in a minute, but I just want to, to drive this point. Is that don't care how good of a worker, don't care how much knowledge. That we may have, that it does not substitute us obeying the word. It matters not how hard you and I may work. Our working would never substitute, be a substitution. Of us obeying the word. There's a caution there, is that whenever we do things to, uh, get the applause and to get the accolades of mankind. I- i- is that, is that, uh, we messing up. Whenever we, when, when, whenever we are committed of again, self-globalization. Cause scripture tells us that anything that we does for flesh global, globalization, it glorifies the flesh. But anything that is done in the spirit glorifies the spirit. Some people has the, uh, has the, uh, the thought and has the desire. Uh, to, uh, to please the, uh, the flesh. Want, they want to get the, uh, the, the, the praise from man, want man to, uh, know what they have done. That's not, that's not, that's not the way that the Lord will, will have us to be. The only way that you and I, uh, can glorify the spirit. Is by obeying the word. So we want to have eternal life. Is that we have to have the word. Can't separate Jesus from the word. Both of them are together. You can't believe in Jesus and don't believe the word. You, you got that? So you can, you can't, you can't separate Jesus from the word. Jesus words are eternal. It's everlasting. So we want to have everlasting life. Let's get the word. Let's get, let's just Jesus. And, um, may want to write this down, is that when you get the word, when you get Jesus, is that. It makes what's in us that is dead alive. There's power in the word. And it's not just the preacher, it's not just the pastor. But every believer job. And I, I think this is a good, uh, a, a good note to, um. To leave you with thinking is that every, every believer, every, um, um. Child of God job is, if you want to know what your, what, what your title, what your job, uh. Details is all about, i- i- is that all of us ought to be, uh, uh, either a male man or, or a male woman. Either you's a male man. Or you're a male woman. And you know, if you know anything about a male man, a, a person that, uh, uh, that handle the mail. Their only job is to deliver the mail. You, you ain't got to worry about what kind of letter, who sent the letter, the contents of the letter. Your only job is. To deliver the mail. Say that. Say my job is to deliver the mail. Say it. My job is to deliver the mail. And that's all we have to do. Is just deliver the message. And you can, and when you deliver that. That's all requires. All right. God bless you and God keep you. It's our prayer and, and I want you to tune in with us on next week. As we, uh, go a little bit farther, gonna try to wrap it up. I didn't know what commitment and I wanna, I wanna look at, uh, uh, another, um. Passes of scripture, uh, that is, um, that is dealing with, um. Being committed and, um, and, and I promise you, you don't want to miss next, uh, segment of, um. Of, of commitment. A little progressive God, our Father, we thank again for your word. We thank you. Uh, for, um, giving us, uh, the desire to, uh, to know more about you. Thank you that you saved us. And Father, we believe that you loved us so much that you gave your only begotten son. Uh, continue to bless us now and continue to. Give us that heart that you and the Trinity has that, uh, that, um. That love that, 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 that you so bestowed upon us through your son Jesus. Lord, we praying now for every person that has tuned in, those who have. Receive a blessing because we know your word goes forth, that it will not return back unto you, God. Gotta be praying now that, that this word afforded on good grounds. Thank you to God for your word. Bless us now. In Jesus's name we ask it all. Amen.